Great. All right, thanks for your attendance this evening. December tenth, twenty twenty four. The Board of Library Trustees have gathered for our monthly meeting. First up on the agenda this evening is the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to discuss or bring up about the consent agenda? If not, can I have a motion to accept it?
Does that include the director's report? Does that have this question or something on that?
Yeah, it would, yeah.
It does include it.
Okay. Page two. You were talking about when we lost power in town. And you said here, as we come to an expected, especially since learning more about what happened, we're very pleased with the rapid response. What happened?
So what I understand is they, I'm summarizing, but what I learned is that they have two main lines in the town for power. They every, not very frequently, they have to do testing on the lines. And so they had planned with a lot of different parties to do the testing, and it was an eight-hour period. So they took one line down and were putting all the power across the backup line. And while a line that has never had problems in years had a fault during that testing period. So they had to then coordinate with all the parties where they were doing the testing and move all the power back onto that line. So they ran off the line that had the fault. And the biggest challenge I heard ended up being that one substation that they got on quickly, then another substation that somebody had, was stuck on Route One to get to the substation. They were just stuck in traffic until they could get there. And that was the big limiting factor. And still with the traffic, don't they have a forty-seven-minute downtime where there's such massive current running across those lines? And the coordination between all the parties, it was a really, it's impressive. I've been to a lot of places where you have a power outage, especially something that's that, talking about that much power and affecting so many people to be able to turn around and go to the backup plan and coordinate. That was, I was very impressed. So I want to give kudos to the late, and or late.
Thank you.
All right. With that, a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I still move.
Okay, you have a second? John, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, unanimous, I should say. All right, so this evening, moving on, we have with us Kirsty Davin. She's the co-head of Literacy Services and Head of Homebound Delivery. And she's here for a report to tell us about her wonderful work.
Excellent. Well, as you may know, and I'm just going to pull a headline from this past July, a GBH headline that said, "At least twenty thousand people wait to learn English in Massachusetts." That was updated in September. This is still a current and urgent need, and all of the ESOL programs across the state are failing us just deeply, including us. We get new students who are coming in each and every week to sign up. And we are serving two different off-site programs right now. As you know, from the reports that we filed in past months, the Four Points Sheridan has asked us to do an onsite program for their employees who are needing to learn English, not just for a job-related English, for their lives. We were approached by the general manager, Shumala Ghosh, over a year ago. And it was her request that we started up the program over there. And it's gone very, very well with support from the hotel. The students that show up for these, there are ten- or twelve-week classes, are paid to participate. They're on the clock when they're in the end. So it has really predicted the success of the program. But beyond that, when the classes have ended, the students have clamored to keep going. So we've, we've had some great success over there. The other program that we've had going on is at the shelter. And that has had considerably more challenges as people are trying to grapple with finding permanent housing and jobs and just being a lot more, things are a lot more chaotic over there. But we have had some amazing tutors who just dove right into the challenge. And we served thirty-eight students over there over the summer. And we've started up a second round. It is experiencing some challenges as people are being encouraged to exit the shelter and find their own living situations, which is great. We like to hear that people are finding those situations. But we are losing students as that happens. So it's kind of constantly in flux. We've had some great support from Liz Hoggrel. And she has drummed up some childcare volunteers for us. So in addition to our literacy volunteers, which you all are familiar with, and the volunteers that I work with in outreach, we've now sprouted yet another section of volunteers. And these are folks that are just, they're professionals. There are, some of them are mothers, some of them are working professionals. But they have all kind of showed up to say, "We want to support these families in any way that we can." We have a working nurse who is our volunteer on Tuesday nights. We have a high school teacher, who's a high school science teacher, who's another volunteer for another night. And these people are just showing up to watch other people's children so that they can put their minds to learning English. So those are the success stories. And one of the bigger success stories is when I lost a volunteer that I had lined up for the Monday daytime class, Liz Hoggrel said, "Oh, well, I'm running programs over there. So do you want me to just run a program and I'll be the de facto childcare?" So she became our volunteer for Mondays. And it's worked out swimmingly. The person who's teaching English on Mondays loves it. And they've come together to do some programming at the end. So Liz will meet with the children, and Sue will meet with the adults. And at the end, they come together for a storytime or a song or something like that together. So it's been incredible to have her in our corner. And the, let's see, what else can I say? I could, I could talk about literacy all, all night long, so we won't do that. What I'll do is instead, I'll give you some numbers. For the fiscal year ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, our program, and I did say twenty twenty-three, our program served one hundred and thirteen adult learners through sixty-seven volunteers for literacy. But for this past year, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, that number jumped to one hundred and forty-two adult learners being served by sixty-five volunteers, so a couple less. And that's been the trend, is that less volunteers are doing more work or working with more students. But we'll see that number jump again. That doesn't even include any of the students that were served over the summer. So add thirty-eight to that, next year, we're going to probably experience another increase of probably about twenty-five percent or so.
Hopefully we'll see some more volunteers with that increase too, right?
Is what?
Hopefully we'll see some more volunteers.
Oh, indeed, that's our hope. And, and actually, I have to say on a side note, we, we have been getting more inquiries, more volunteers, and I hope that they will take root. What would happen sometimes is people will volunteer, and then they'll realize how much is involved in the training, the literacy training. And they, and they sort of back away slowly. But we do get a lot of inquiries. So my hope is, actually, I, yes, I'll go on record as saying this, this has been in the back of my mind. I want you guys to see how many people approach us, even though it doesn't show up in our numbers. So I'm hoping to put together a report for the last couple of years of how many people, like, just inquired, so that you know that volunteerism is alive and well and, and coming to the library. And then the other thing that I want to say is the, for the outreach, the homebound delivery part of things, our numbers are smaller, but no less, no less important. I think we're serving a really vulnerable population. And the people that get books delivered to their homes, sometimes that's like all, all, all of what they have. And they tell me repeatedly, or they'll call in and they'll say, "Thank you so much for this program." They don't want to be watching TV, they're not hooked on, they're not online, and they want to be reading, and they really appreciate the work that we do for them. We have a great, small but mighty corps of thirteen volunteers delivering to between twenty and twenty-five, you know, at-home patrons. And that number fluctuates, and we want that to happen because some people are just signed on for short term. They have had a sort of an operation or something like that that takes them out of the mix, but then eventually they want to come back to the library. And that actually happened this past summer. One of our patrons actually had a stroke out in the parking lot. He called nine-one-one for himself. But he signed on for our delivery service, and maybe a month and a half later, he was back at the library. So we like that, we like our numbers to stay manageable there. Does anyone have any questions? I just jumped in and out. John, yes?
For the folks at home especially, could you give a bit more basic context on how homebound delivery works? How do people identify that they need it? How are the books selected that they'll be getting? How frequently are the interactions? All those kinds of basics?
Oh, yeah, that's a great question, John. So it varies widely. We have some folks who, when they were coming here, would order their own books or select their own books, and they want to continue to do that. And if they're computer savvy, they can do that from home. We have a person who gets at least ten books a week who does that. She does nothing but read. And we love her for it. But we also have some other folks that want to read, and maybe they don't, they want that browsing option. We just had someone sign up. And during COVID, you guys might remember that we had the browse bag option. And so I suggested that to her. And I said, you know, "I can, I can pick you six, and we can take it from there, and I can figure out what you like, and then maybe you give me some guidance." And I put this in the last report, she, she actually said, "Nope, I couldn't have done better myself, keep it up." So she's going to keep on getting like the six-book browse bag option. And then there's any manner of things in between. Somebody might call us and say, "My daughter says I have to read this book. It's on the New York Times Bestseller list." And then, and then I'll just have to look up what the, what the book title is. So between myself and Darshana, we really do provide a reader's advisory for anybody that wants it. And, and some of our patrons read and get deliveries once a week. Some of them are once a month, some of them are getting a delivery and then saying, "Don't call me, I'll call you." So it really does run the gamut of frequency, amount, and selection. But we've sort of functioned like their little mini library, and I think that they really appreciate it. Yes?
Do you provide things for people who have like low vision and things like that?
Yes.
And the audiobooks and?
Yes, we have, well, our large print collection is huge compared to some libraries. And that's the, the collection that gets circulated to the different locations around town, the Norwood Housing Authority location. So they all get large print books. And I would say twenty-five to thirty-five percent, maybe higher sometimes, of our at-home patrons want the large, large print books as well. And recently, I've had a longtime reader who, he needs to have cataract surgery. And, and so he's recently asked me for books on CD. And we have a CD player that we can loan out. Actually, we have multiple ones. But he's had one in his possession for the last four or five months or so while he's waiting to, to be well enough to have his eye surgery. And he completely appreciates it. I know that there's been this trend sort of towards cutting down on books on CD because a lot of people are reading through Libby, the audio. But he is old school, and he is not going to change anytime soon. And he is very much appreciating the, the books on CD. We also have the Perkins Talking Books. There's less call for that these days. A lot of the people that are dealing with a Perkins library are, are using their, their app. But I talked with their librarian, and he said, "There is that sort of bandwidth of people that just are not going to get converted to, to digital." So it's sort of like we have to keep everything, you know, options running.
What about magnifying things?
We do have the sheet magnifiers. It's understandably, it's not a, there's not a big draw there because you're having to flip pages and then, and have this thing that you hover over your page. So it's a little bit more involved. But we have had one or two people choose that as an option.
And here in the library, for people who want to visit, we have additional technology.
Yes, yes, I wish they could use it from their homes. We have, right outside the door, we have an accessibility station, and it magnifies. And actually, we've gotten some use from people that are doing genealogy, and they have these really old documents in that scholarly cursive script, and you can't, you know, understand what they're saying. And you come in, you magnify them. And I've, I've helped somebody a couple of times cipher out what the, what that person's name was. So it's kind of nice.
So do you have, if somebody donated a magnifying thing, you know, the kind that you sit, like, you know, they sell them on the internet. I mean, they're only like thirty bucks, and they're like, you put the book underneath it, and then you can read the book. If somebody donated one of those, would you be able to take it to people? Are there any limitations on things like that?
There, we've had one in the past. And the only real, I mean, I would say that the, the thing that prevented someone from making use of it was it was kind of awkward, and they were a little bit, I wouldn't say fearful, but just not liking technology. So I remember delivering, this was back when Nancy Ling was here. We, we brought it out to someone's house, we were showing her how to use it, but it didn't really take root with her. And I don't know, I think it's just a technology thing. Also, it's, you know, it's kind of like you have to be right under the.
Did you see those glasses that you can read when you're lying down?
Oh, are they like?
They have like a mirror on them?
Virtual, virtual reality. I'm trying to picture some of our patrons with those on. I'm having a hard time.
Actually, those came about during polio for the iron lung patients.
Oh, interesting.
Those were, I mean, they were around before that, but they became, you know, more commercial during the iron lung. When I first started my nursing career, there were some patients at the VA that were still on iron lungs. And, yeah, you'd come in the room, and they'd be facing this way, and they'd say, "Hello." And they'd be going, "Oh, this is kind of..." You know, until I saw that they had those glasses on, I was like, "How do they know?" But they were, yeah, they, they were godsend to, to those patients, for sure.
So if someone were interested in becoming a volunteer, either for the homebound delivery or for literacy, how would they go about it? What would they do?
We have multiple avenues. So we have on our website, we have forms that you can fill out. We also get a lot of emails. Casey can speak to this, she's forever forwarding me volunteer requests. And we have people that just stop by and ask at the front desk, and will sometimes fill out a, a form on spot. What happens is, you know, I, I have to wait until I actually have someone for them to deliver to if they're looking for the homebound delivery position. But I have had a couple of instances where people filled those out, and then were on standby and became a great sort of ad hoc person to deliver and did substitute deliveries for me. And we have two long-term volunteers who actually do that for me on a regular basis too, that I want to give a shout out to, Wayne. And Dave Briarly is a newer volunteer, but I said, "Dave, I don't have anybody new for you." And he was like, "That's all right, you tell me when, when you have like a vacationer." And I've used him like probably half a dozen times in the last two and a half months with people away. So it's been fantastic that way. But that is what I would recommend, is if people want to volunteer, if you all know somebody that wants to volunteer, just have them, you can give, give my number to them, you can have them stop by the front desk. Any, any one of those things is, is totally applicable. And we will keep them in mind until we have an assignment for them, so.
Well, I, I for one, I know the rest of the board as well, really appreciate all their hard work and all the hard work of all the volunteers with these both programs. Because, you know, it's very easy to see how important it is to, you know, so many people. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you for noticing it. It's, it's a robust crew that you have here, and they're amazing. Between the sixty-five or so literacy volunteers right now and the thirteen downstairs, and then the others in children's and doing miscellaneous tasks around the library, it's been incredible. So thank you.
Of course, we wouldn't be anywhere without you, Norma, and the rest of the literacy staff.
Thank you.
Guiding us, mentoring us, keeping us informed of what's going on, and helping us through the darkness sometimes of trying to help the students. So thank you, thank you so much. Without you, we wouldn't, we wouldn't sometimes be able to know which direction to go in. So thank you very much.
That's great time, Margaret, thank you.
Yeah.
I want to just make sure I'm on the record as expressing appreciation and gratitude for perseverance and dedication that you bring, Kirsty. With hurting this many people and leading a team with this many volunteers is no small feat. And dealing with the populations that we're serving, there's, I mean, obviously communication challenges. That's part of why we're doing it. But that's, that's only the beginning of the challenges when we think about the reasons why adults are in these situations. There's a lot of life challenges that people are internally grappling with. And your grace and, and, well, playing this, this, just the spirit that you do it in and the way that you treat everybody with respect as they're, you know, and understanding is really commendable, and I really appreciate everything that you bring with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well then, let's move on to reports. Please, take it away.
All right, so there are some exciting reports this month. As you saw in, in my report, we did have to say goodbye to Sarah Woodberg, who was a part-time circulation assistant. Had her last date since we last met here with us, but still in the community. So hopefully we'll see her around, she's a teacher. And, you know, we have a special place for her. She actually had a very quiet wedding ceremony in this very room, which I know that the library is dear to her. Not something that often happens here, but they had just a few people, and she decided this is where she wanted to celebrate her special day. So quietly, they kind of snuck in and had a little piece here, it was really sweet. So I'm missing Sarah. Jackie Jers has been working out fabulously, is the new full-time member of the Cert Department. And we have had a great turnout. Michael and I are reviewing the applicants for, to get help since Sarah left. And I'm hoping we'll be doing some interviews soon. So we're working on setting them up. So we're in the middle of that process right now. And I'm looking to have somebody onboard starting first of the year is really what we're aiming for right now. So it's very exciting. And everything else is going well. They keep promising that we'll see a contract soon. They're, it's with the manager's office and finalizing the MOAs. They were reviewing the original signed MOAs and consolidating them into one final contract to refer to. So as soon as we see progress on that, everybody will be relieved.
Yes, first of their process.
And they, they promise it's getting closer. There's some exciting programs happening as the next item in the agenda. We had a really fun time last Friday. I personally got to get some assistance from some little ones lighting our tree. We had a trial run because I didn't realize that I was missing a plug. So I flipped the switch after we did our first countdown and realized that that was a good trial countdown, and that we got to do it for real the second time. And I had a fabulous little helper that was just adorable. And then read a couple of stories, and then just, we had really nice attendance. And Kirsty actually helped with that too, we didn't even talk about it. Kirsty rallied a whole bunch of folks, got names from the community, about seventy-some names, I think you collected?
Seventy names this year, yeah.
Seventy names this year. And we collected cards that people decorated during the lighting, and then we've had other folks contributing since. For people that are just suitable, you know, who would benefit from having a card sent this time of year. Kirsty could say a couple more things about how we identified the folks.
Yes, I, so it started out a few years ago with just our homebound patrons. And then we branched out to, I contacted coordinators at the Norwood Housing Authority locations and said, "Do you have any people that might need a little holiday cheer?" And so they sent me some names. Last year, it was sixty names that we had total. This year, it's up to seventy. And this year, the high school book group helped me out. Jen Bradley took twenty cards off my hands, and then she said that they had so much fun that she would like to take twenty more. So they, they really made a dent in our, in our, in our holiday cheer program. And we had some, a small but mighty crew of adorable people at the tree lighting that were, it was great because they started decorating these cards. And then Clayton stole them away from me for the storytime, but they were like, "Can we leave our stuff here?" And I said, "Yes, yes, can I come back later?" So they, some of them did two and three cards, they were adorable. And I hope to grow it even larger next year. I sort of said, "Send me some names, but not too many names." And so hopefully, we'll be able to bump it up a little bit next year with some help from some other person.
We have some incredible artists in the community and on staff, I have to say.
And on staff.
I'm going to give Casey a little shout out. I've seen, I learned about her artistic ability doing this last year.
Indeed, and yours. And maybe the trustees will help.
The other thing that we did do in the tree lighting was launch the, the contest to guess how many books are in the book tree. So we gave a hint this year. In the past, we have made the tree from anywhere from two, between two hundred and five hundred books. So if that guides guesses, and whoever guesses most closely will win a fabulous gift prize, a basket, which you can see on display down there right now, when we take the tree down on the seventeenth of January.
That's your cloak?
Is the?
Between two and five hundred.
Between two hundred and five hundred, that's right.
That's your cloak.
Narrows it in.
Yeah.
Real tight.
So if anybody's thinking a thousand, they may want to rein it in a little bit. That's right, yeah. And it's more than a dozen.
Grinch, shellfish.
How many people usually?
Who guess?
Guess.
That's a good question, I don't actually know.
Don't you guess on that?
Yeah. More than two and fewer than a thousand, that's right.
Is it who's closer without going over, or are they just a couple apart?
I think it's just who's closer. I don't know if we're doing Price is Right rules. Yeah.
Both one off.
And do you know sort of how far off the winner tends to be?
I think in some years, we've gotten somebody who's gotten it right on the nose. So it didn't really matter.
Did they work here?
No, no. Although we keep it secret, we don't, but I think there's only two people on staff who know it's the people who built the tree. So shout out to Kate Sheehan and Nicole, why am I just facing you?
Dana.
Yes, no, Nicole Dana, yes, thank you. Nicole Dana for putting the tree together this year. And continuing, it was Hallie Palmgren and Irene Godovich who originally did it. This is our eleventh tree. It's quite a tradition, people really enjoy it.
I showed a picture on my phone to my family at Thanksgiving dinner. They were all absolutely amazed at that tree. Even then, the hundred-year-old mother-in-law, my brother, she was like, "Look at that, oh my goodness." Because it's really something.
If you look closely, it has ornaments as well that are made from book jackets. And we have a design, so if you, if you like it, have some book jackets that you would like to remember, but really aren't doing their job as jackets anymore. You can, we can share the designs, you can make your own book jacket ornaments. It's cool?
Yeah.
It's really fun. Next Friday, or no, well, this Friday, which is the next Friday, in like three days, or end of this week, on the thirteenth, we are having Share Your Joy with the library director, myself. I was talking with Liz and said, you know, "Notice the superintendent from the schools had a meeting agreed here." And I said, "If you're looking for programs in December, you know, I'm happy to, I don't get a lot of opportunities where I get to meet with the public." So I said, "Yeah, if you'd like, I'd be happy to just, you know, let's talk about, let's bring this joy this holiday season." So I'm giving an exclusive behind-the-scenes tour to the first ten people who register on Friday afternoon. If we get a lot of extra people, we are running a waiting list. So we can see about accommodations if we have a lot of folks that are interested in something else. And then we'll hang out and talk about how we're finding joy this season for a little bit on Friday afternoon, and have some, some tea and refreshments. So looking forward to that. There's a lot of other funding programs, but those are the highlights for me this, this week and last.
Sounds great.
I have exciting news on the maintenance and repair line of the agenda. I got clearance to move forward with some architects to, who had given us a draft proposal to do the building study that needs to be done to figure out how to care for the envelope and existing conditions report, and also do the planning for what we need to do to foresee for the future of this building, for the foreseeable future. And we're actually doing a walkthrough so they can see it and give us a final proposal tomorrow afternoon. So there is some forward momentum on that that we could finally, I'm very excited.
That's good. Great.
Is that in the budget?
It is, so it's using, the funding for the study is money that was already approved by town meeting in the gap for capital outlay. And that's, we have money in the budget for that exactly. When we get the final report, that will be cleared by, by the general manager's office to make sure, and we'll make sure it fits all the procurement guidelines. I expect a quick turnaround and that we will have the funds for it. Obviously, it has to fall within our budget before we can do it, which is, they gave us a draft, a draft proposal, but they need to actually come and see the building so they can give us the final. And we're having some dialogue about how much detail that we're looking for for that existing conditions report.
So was this capital outlay money, or is this our budget money? Because does this affect our MRR moving forward?
It does not affect, no. This is cap, this is money approved and is from the capital outlay committee and was not, it's not attached to our MRR at all.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Is the, the walkthrough, is that by the architect or by the town?
It's, so town members have been invited, but, and I think Jim, assuming he's able to be there, I will be there in the, in the health challenge there. But it's the architects.
Oh, it is the architects, okay.
Yeah.
Not the town architects, the, the outside architects?
The, yes, the, the architects from the firm that has given us the draft.
Okay.
Yeah, proposal. Exactly. It's the, the firm that is doing. Exactly. They, it's the, uh, the firm that, uh, is doing, there's a, a massive library development in Belmont. They're getting a branding library and a friend who's a director there, uh, Peter Struziere, who some of you may know.
Yeah.
He's the director there and referred me to, to Conrad, who's the lead principal.
Okay.
There, so. So that's exciting. We finally have.
Yeah, that's good news.
Yeah, it is good news.
Bringing you joy.
It is bringing joy. One of the things that's bringing me joy, yes. We have heat, the heat is working and we have forward progress.
Forward progress. That's always good.
It's very good.
Always good.
That's right. And the Friends Library, I know we're meeting tomorrow. I'm actually going in Lydia's place because she's on vacation this weekend.
Fantastic. Well, see you there. So, uh, yes, Friends are actively planning, um, some future, um, fundraisers. Um, they're, they are planning on continuing the donation levels of past years, which is good. I don't know if they've had a chance to meet with you yet, but, uh, talking through those, but that's on their plan.
Excellent.
And, um, yeah, they're gonna have some, um, exciting programming and fundraisers coming up, um, um, you know, probably mid-winter and then in the spring as well, as well as the usual ones that they, they sponsor. Um, so it, it should be, um, it'll be different. They're looking for, you know, outside venues and outside programs. And then we mentioned something about like a wine and cheese, but, so they're, they're looking at, um, alternatives. And trying to find something that, you know, makes sense for, for them to run as well as for the community. So, but, um, so that, uh, hopefully we'll find out more tomorrow on that.
Great.
Yeah. Correspondence.
Uh, there is some praise. I'm, I'm looking for, I just got some praise for our staff, uh, today that will be in the next packet.
Okay.
Um, but I think, you know, what, what, I forget the, there is a, I think there's a couple pieces of correspondence in here.
Yeah.
The standard, there's some praise for our staff, which is always great to receive.
Oh, yeah.
I encourage you to go through it. Yeah. There's a really nice note that you can look forward to next month.
Okay, good.
'Cause it officially came in December, so.
Okay, good, good. All right, old business. Uh, the, what committee? The ad hoc committee we met?
Uh, it was the finance committee. Because it was about the gifts for our WCC.
Right. Yeah. So we met, um, that was two weeks ago, correct?
Uh, that sounds right.
December second.
Yeah.
Yep.
And, um, the, um, finance committee looked over the, um, uh, thrift shops, um, suggestion and, well, request to, uh, have, um, funds, donate funds used specifically for museum passes. It was five thousand dollars per.
Exactly.
And, um, the finance committee, um, gave it their, their blessing. And so we would like to have the blessing of the entire board. So if I could have a motion, if there's any questions about that first, about that.
And, and so how is the passes normally get, how do they normally get funded?
So the WCC has paid, has given us money. And, and once upon a time, they actually purchased some of the passes and just gave us the passes. Um, which we realized it would be a lot more efficient and, and as we're analyzing which passes to keep, we'd much rather, as with other gifts, we'd like to, we appreciate the support, but it's easier for us to manage the actual purchasing and, and deciding whether or not we're gonna sustain certain passes. Um, so we have taken over during the pandemic as well, the thrift shop wasn't making that kind of income. And so they weren't able to make, or the, uh, donation wasn't forthcoming. We didn't wanna just sacrifice the passes. We did have a couple that, uh, lapsed and then we picked up again. But we've, um, used, uh, so I think we've used state aid and we used some other funds to pay for passes, uh, in the interim. Um, and so we really appreciate the support, uh, so we can use that fund for, for other materials.
Right. And the list, um, there are a few new, um, venues, uh, passes.
The, the list that's here on this are all current passes that we have. Um, and they asked if we wish to have anything else, uh, they, one of their, their requirements that they asked me is they wanted to, um, it's, uh, if they are gonna pay for passes, um, they want the right to, to choose which passes they actually fund. So they agreed to pay all the ones, uh, that we currently have. But if we want anything else and want funds, I'll have to communicate with them to see if it's okay to use their funds or if I need to use other funds to purchase those, uh, additional passes.
Okay.
So if they're open to the idea of other passes, they just wanted to have some say on that, which I think is acceptable.
That's acceptable.
Yeah.
All right, good.
And so is there additional funds after the purchase of all those passes to purchase more or?
So the, the purchase of all, all these passes right now will be a little shy of five thousand. We may get an additional, uh, pass for the museum assigned to the aquarium or the two that we've been looking at because of those, the most popular. Um, uh, and we can supplement that and that would use the entirety of the funds this year. Um, so that's what we're looking at.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? All right, then can I have a motion to accept the, um, Women's Community Committee thrift shop donation for passes? John?
So.
All right, second.
All second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. Great, fantastic. Thank you. Good job. Good work.
So I will add, before we move, uh, away from this agenda item, they are very much, they're, they're very excited, uh, to do this. They'd like to do a photo opportu, uh, you know, a press release and, and actually give us the check. And we're looking at how to get one of those big, you know, kind of photo release checks for, for, uh, for the press. Um, and would like to invite whoever would be willing to, to come and, and receive it on behalf of the library. Um, so I'll be sending out a query or I'll work with Casey and, uh, see if we can arrange it for a date that people can attend.
Right.
So I'll be a fan of that.
Nice.
Just accept this donation.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
But I told them we couldn't schedule that and, and the official had to hand over until we had this book passed. That's the appropriate order of things to do.
Exactly. All right. So Clayton, are there patrons in the library? Oh, wait, hi.
While we're still on old business, um, the report from that finance committee meeting, the second part that was other business, did we wanna discuss that?
Oh, about the inclusion of the, um, I have, uh, a second. Oh, about the inclusion, um, for more, like they requested more information about major purchases and vendors. We, we, we can. It's other business. Yeah, sure. So, um, Marguerite, uh, during that finance committee meeting, subcommittee meeting, um, she expressed a desire for, um, the trustees to obtain, to get more information about major purchases and vendors, that, um, where the purchases, um, come from. I don't know if you wanna go into a little more detail about that.
I, yeah, I just wanted the trustees to be aware of, uh, any large purchases made, uh, in the library that were, they haven't been any in a long time. But, uh, if there was large purchases made by the, uh, library and if there were, um, bids put out, who were the bids put out to and how was the final bid, um, made? Why, why was one person or one company selected above the others? And, um, where, where the funds taken from? And, uh, yeah, I wanted the trustees to be aware of how those funds were taken and what, what, uh, you know, where, where we got the funds, like, just as Sarah said, where did those funds come from for the, uh, for the building, uh?
The study.
The building study, where was that coming from? You know, and how is that gonna affect the overall, uh, ERA and the budget? So at the end of the year, uh, we wanna make sure, of course, since that's one of the things that the, one of the big things that the trustees are, and, you know, responsible for is the oversee of the budget of the library. And, uh, we get monthly detailed reports from, um, Clayton. And, um, so everything is right there. But, uh, I think that, you know, we should, uh, know along the way if there's a big purchase, how that purchase is being handled and what's being done and, you know, not because we have, uh, that there's, we would ever think that there was anything untoward about it, but just so we know how that's being done. So when we get hit with the, uh, when we get hit with the final memo, we would be like, "Wow, well, that's a lot of money." Well, we wouldn't be surprised. We wouldn't be surprised. We'd know, we'd know the process. We'd know, uh, how, how the undertaking of it all and, um, how things went along with that purchase. And I just think that that level of transparency is something that, uh, would be good for all of us to be privy to. So I wanted to, uh, make that part of the finance committee. And, uh, then when the finance committee knew about it, and then it should, you know, certainly go to all of you. And one more thing I wanted to say also was that, um, in the bylaws, our bylaws, it says that the, uh, finance person should meet whoever is the chair of the finance committee, uh, should meet with, um, Clayton, the director, more than once a year. So not just at the end of the year when the, um, budget is finalized, but more than once a year. And we, at our meeting, decided that it could just be, uh, six months. So halfway through the year, meet, make sure things are on track. Well, we basically know that things are on track 'cause we get that monthly, uh, meeting. But, you know, there are long-range plans that, uh, uh, Clayton might have in his mind, "Well, we also wanna do this and we also wanna do that." So just to keep things like that or staffing issues or union issues or, uh, building issues or whatever that he, he knows about that. You know, just to keep people all in the loop. And, um, so when I was looking at things going into this meeting, uh, I was trying to figure out, you know, how I feel about, um, me not really knowing what goes on in the finance. I thought those two things would help us, uh, have more fiduciary responsibility to our role as being responsible for the budget.
One of the things that you mentioned, Marguerite, was that you only happened to notice that there was a, uh, a certain amount of money spent on something and a certain amount of money removed from a fund. And the funds sometimes are dedicated or we wanna know what is happening. And, you know, we've got numbers, but they don't tell you anything unless you happen just to notice it. And so that's a, a little bit more of the clarity that you had in mind, I believe.
Well, what I did say was, uh, I said, you know, the tree out front cost five thousand dollars. We love that tree. It's a great tree. It was given as a gift.
It wasn't a five, that's not the right number.
Where did that five thousand dollars come from?
I don't know. I'm sure I'm thinking of five thousand.
The Swain, the Swain Fund or something was, they had a five thousand dollar deficit in, in November or something. I'll go over with, you know.
You'll have to look into it. It wasn't the tree though.
Oh, okay. And I thought, well, that's where the money for the tree came from. It must've come from that. But anyways, yeah, I'd like to know where, uh, items come from. I would like to know how, how things get spent. So that, uh, you know, the, the incidentals, like, as they're listed, incidentals. We know about those, but when things come, I think we would like to know where they come from and how the money is, what funds they get spent from. I, I'm not sure I can answer these questions 'cause I don't know about the finances, but go right ahead, Sean.
Okay.
I think Shelly was raised.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Um, so what do you consider a, a large purchase? What is the threshold that you're considering?
Uh, anything that is outside the purview of what we get through the monthly, in the monthly, um, monies that, in the budget that we get. We, you know, the staffing and that, all of those things. So if something were to go wrong in the building, um, many of the things that go wrong in the building, uh, we won't, we won't be aware of anymore because those things now go to maintenance and the town takes care of those things, facility management. So those things don't come to, uh, Clayton anymore. They used to go to Charlotte and we were told about them. And, uh, those were the things that went off a bit many, many times. And those were big cost items.
So I guess again, the question is, so, um, I think if we wanna start to request more transparency around the expenditure of funds and the sorts of the funds is?
Well, like I say, we haven't had anything. We haven't had anything come up. But if something were to come up.
I, if I could finish my thought.
Yeah.
Is that we would wanna be clear so that we're not creating a burden on providing information. Like is it over two hundred and fifty dollars or over a thousand dollars? Is it if it's exceeded a budget in a particular category that we've already reviewed and approved? So like when I'm looking at finances, I'm looking at variances between what we've budgeted, you know, what we're, we're taking in and what we've spent. And so, um, I don't have an opinion one way or the other if we should do this. I'm just sort of disgustingly thinking it through. Um, I, I, you know, is it issue transparency to know when a big purchase is made? And if so, what is that, again, threshold that we would wanna know? I think that's a very important, um, aspect of it to start to think about what would our policy or preferred guidelines be that we would wanna go back and draft so that we're not doing this in a reactionary way or in a way that maybe hasn't been fully, um, considered with the right type of, um, mechanisms in place to like involve the right people. Um, 'cause I suspect there's already a lot of ability to access information because we're a public. And so is it, um, you know, I just would like to think that through. But so that's why I asked really, what, what would raise to that amount? If we don't know, we should probably start there and think about what is the criteria that we wanna apply in order to understand, you know, where those purchases are made and what is the impact? What is the end result and goal of that understanding? Is it to, um, have a better line of sight to variances in the budget that we might anticipate because we're overspending? Or to say, you know, is it so say if we can understand, does this affect another part of the budget that we hadn't considered? And now we need to move money around? Um, and even both of those scenarios, I expect that if there was a budget concern, that Clayton as director would raise it to us and we would be able to address it on a more, uh, you know, discreet basis versus a blanket policy. So what's the threshold?
Well, I'm not asking for a policy. I'm just saying if there was a large outlay above and beyond what we get in our monthly report, uh, I think that we would like to know about it. It hasn't happened because many of the things that we used to be appraised of before Clayton came have now been taken away from the budget, which thankfully the town now pays for. The library should never have had to pay for things like, uh, you know, the broken fence out here or the, you know, uh, landscaping and things like that. I don't think that they should've had to because other places in the town didn't have to pay for things like that. They didn't have to pay for the building, the maintenance of the building outside. And with having, um, uh, the town pay for those things now, that doesn't come to us. So.
So what's the concern if we don't see it?
There is no concern. I just said if it happens, uh, we would like to know about it. I don't foresee it happening. I'm just saying if it should happen and some, and something came up, a large cost item, and it went out to bid, I would like to know, how did, how did the bid go? Who, who were the people that went, it went to? And how did this, how did it all happen? I, I would like to know that.
So if something goes out to bid would be the threshold or the, okay?
Yeah, like we used to in the past.
Okay, so may, maybe that's the answer is if it's something that raises to the level of going out to bid.
Right, right.
So the tree might not because it didn't go out to bid.
It, no, it, that, the tree, the thing about the tree was, I saw, I, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to Clayton about this later, but the tree was a gift, am I right? Clayton, was the tree a gift?
It was, so the tree was part of the funds from, uh, Judy, um.
Yeah.
To Dracken.
Yeah, yeah.
To Dracken.
Yeah, that was a, that was a gift.
High, in memorial of her.
Right. But when I looked, I couldn't see what gift, what, what, on the, on the gift incidentals, where it came from. What fund did, did that tree come from? I was curious. Of course I am. We're in charge of the budget. What, where did that come from? I didn't see it.
So is that regular accounting?
Uh, I should do that.
I, I share, um, Marguerite's desire for more, uh, transparency on matters of this sort. But I also share, uh, Shelley's concern, Sherry's concern that, uh, the devil is in the details, to paraphrase it. And my thought is this has a lot of similarities to signature policies. Uh, how high in the organization do you have to go for a final signature of approval on a purchase? And, um, at what level do you have to go out to vending? I suspect that the purchasing department of the town has a lot of policies in place that we, we may in fact be governed by. Um, so I think it wouldn't hurt for us to have a policy, not only to, uh, provide a format so that you get the information and you get it in the cases where there's a general consensus that it ought to be provided. Um, we've got a book of policies. This would seem to be a good candidate for that. My suggestion is that we, we pass this request on to Clayton and, uh, ask him to, uh, to do the things that are necessary with the help of the staff and the town's responsible people. They come up with a, a draft approach and some proposals on what needs to be in it and what is more situation-specific and shouldn't be over-managed. Um, and what I'm looking for for that is something that's protection in several different ways. Um, I, I agree with, what I took as the heart of what you were saying, that, Marguerite, that our, the protection of us as fiduciary responsible, uh, boards. that our, the protection of us as fiduciary responsible, uh, boards requires us to be involved in having this kind of information and probably involves when do we get that information? And how do we connect into the decision-making process that flows out of it? Uh, but by the same token, I think the, um, the staff and the director need to have some protection from, um, after the fact, second guessing from the board. Uh, somebody had a different idea of what's big, somebody had a different idea of what you need if something is big. A policy, I think, would, would, would lay down some choices and we'd all sign onto it, it's acceptable.
Alright, that's, that's a good idea, Jonathan, I can see that, I mean, it, it makes sense. I mean, you know, to your point, Marguerite, it's about, you know, having that information. And to your point, Sherry, it's about, okay, we need to set some guidelines and, you know, John's approach would help us do that, at least that way, keep us informed. Uh, and also kind of set that level when that information needs to be shared and for what, you know, what those reasons are so that we're not saddling the staff with every, you know, they need a box of pens, they don't have to come for approval.
And, uh, yeah, that is that, yeah, uh, yeah, uh,
you know, I, I, we don't wanna do that, of course.
No, because that is listed already
Right, exactly.
in the monthly, what we get.
Exactly.
I mean, that's the, the day-to-day, month-to-month, you know, it would, it would have to be something, you know, big.
Yeah, yeah. And to, to Sherry's point, like, again, maybe it is, maybe going out to bid, maybe it's something that, again, 'cause in that way, um, that's what part of this process would help discover, like, what, what does the town have to say about those things, right? Like, you know, 'cause I'm trying to imagine what we, what the library would possibly have to go out to bid that would not involve the town. Right, because, I mean, obviously the larger outlays are typically structural or, or building-related. Um, so that would all fall underneath the town's purview, but, yeah.
Yeah, no, it does, yeah, but before, I, I, I don't know if you remember, but John, you remember?
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah.
The elevators, the landscaping, the, the pointing of the bricks, the, um, the, um,
Lights outside?
Yeah, and all of that.
But I don't remember, and maybe you do, is to what extent were the, uh, was the purchasing department just taking over this, this?
No, no, Charlotte would tell us, you know, this is this and these are the bids, and this is the way it goes, and she'd say, again, okay.
Remember fixing the grandfather clock and?
Yeah, all of those.
And the outside lights.
Well, I know the purchasing department has become a bit more rigorous in sets.
Yeah, that's what we're saying. Yeah, so most of those things have been taken, you know, uh, out of the hands of the library and good. I don't think that the library should have to pay for those things.
So maybe the policy will end up being notable for its exceptions.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Well, I think sort of what this was about here is, um, the tree. And if Clayton had said that the funds for the tree came from the so-and-so fund, this probably would never have come up. And that's what Charlotte would do. Do you remember with the, what was it, the study pot or something she got?
We bought a pot and we did talk about it here.
Yeah, but it was something, something like that.
Okay.
And, you know, she just, and there it was, you know? And so that's where it came from, good. You know, it, it wasn't, we really, I wasn't looking at it as something that needed a policy. I was just looking at it as something that was a little clarity, you know, like,
Hmm.
How many books do you get for this much money? Oh, three thousand, oh, thanks, Clayton, that's enough.
Well, we, we're not really involved in that, no, I don't want us to be either.
No, I'm, but it's just out of the curiosity factor of what these numbers mean. That's all. But I don't know.
I wanted to make a motion that we take this up as a topic for an ad hoc committee meeting and maybe Marguerite, myself, or John, I don't know who else is on the ad hoc committee, could just explore it a little bit and, and think, uh, you know, just, just discuss, like, what are we trying to achieve? How can we achieve it?
Would it make more sense, ad hoc committee or the finance committee?
Um, I said ad hoc, 'cause I think I'm on the ad hoc committee, I'm not on the finance committee.
But you can always go to any committee meeting.
How, and I, um, and, um, you know, if you don't, if finance is fine, however you wanna address it. Uh, again, I wasn't privy to any of these meetings previously, so my understanding and expectations of this information is not necessarily the same as folks that have been serving on the finance committee and working within the budget, uh, more closely. So, um, I don't like to set it and forget it with my budgets.
I'm thinking it gets handed off to the staff in consultation with the finance committee because volunteers are not the ideal set of people to get into something that's this technical and this specific and this legal and such, is my opinion.
I was thinking of just formulating what the library trustee's objective is more clearly and put some criteria in place around how we might achieve reaching that objective.
I understand that, but I heard divergent views of what the objective was just between Marguerite and Donna just now.
Yeah.
So, I, I, I have a feeling that approaching it in that way might actually be slower and less satisfactory.
Yeah, I mean, the thought is that we could meet and discuss it and come back with, you know, whoever wanted to participate, circulate a document like we have in past policies, people could weigh in and then we could come back and, uh, formalize it or meet again. I don't, I don't, I don't know that there's any urgency to this. So, um, in terms of how quickly we move to set a policy, I don't, I don't know, um, what pressure there is unless we're thinking, you know, you know, when do our bids go out? Probably not for, I mean, it's ongoing, but, you know, I don't know, so.
We don't do a lot of bids, honestly, it's not, not relative to much of it.
That's what, that's, that's what, and, and that-
So maybe the, is it the threshold that we're talking about that you wanna have visibility into?
Right, well, the premise of it was, when we were talking at the finance committee, Clayton said, we don't have a lot of bids, I said, yeah, I know, but, because a lot of that was, you know, taken away, which was great. But if we did, we would like to know. So the ad hoc committees, you and John, if you would wanna take that on.
Yeah, or, yeah.
I, 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 I just, my, my thought is that the staff, we, we have put the staff in the lead position on policies generally as of a year or two ago. And I think that worked out extremely well.
Yeah.
So the idea of having the staff at big point and they'll be consulting with the finance committee and the rest of the board periodically.
I would prefer not to have a policy on it, I would prefer not to have a policy on it.
I'd like to make a motion.
Alright.
I move that we table this until, Marguerite has consulted with Clayton and they have a discussion about this so that we have a little bit more substance and fact because I agree with Marguerite, I don't want a policy.
So shall we put this as old business?
Um, yes. Yep, we'll make this part of old business and, um,
Thank you.
Do you need a second for the motion or anything like that?
Didn't sound like it, quite made it to be a motion.
Yeah, I didn't quite get to the end of it, so let's pretend it wasn't a motion at all. I just-
So we'll put the topic as old business for the next meeting.
For the next meeting, but that's good because then, um, Marguerite and Clayton can have time to dive into it a little bit deeper and then from there, um, provide us more guidance and as far as, you know, what the, you know, well, we know what the goals are, but how do we obtain that and what are the circumstances that, you know, would arise in that situation? Since, you know, the landscape has changed so, so dramatically with the town's intervention with most of the large outlays. And then that way, um, if nothing more, it's, it ends up being just a, um, a guidance point for handling, you know, future outlays or, or future, um, large purchase items that don't fall under regular budgetary deductions. That's all good. Alright, any other discussion on that point? Alright, patrons?
We've had patrons in the library. We did have a situation the week of Thanksgiving with an individual who's been a regular, uh, who was seen nodding off in a prominent location differently normally where we, um, worked with the police department to do a wellness check, and, uh, they discovered, uh, illegal drugs in the individual and ended up arresting them, uh, taking them into custody, and we gave them a ninety day no trespass, um, after that. Because, well, I harbor that kind of behavior, because that's the only thing that would rise, I think, to, to note, to make sure people are.
Alright, well, we'll move on now to, unless there's any other old business that you've discussed or brought up? Alright, let's move on to new business then.
We have talked already about Share Your Joy on December thirteenth. And I also wanted to draw everybody's attention and encourage people to turn out for the new story walk. Uh, there's a holiday story walk with the nineteen thirty-nine edition of Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer now over at Indian, uh, at the Indian Trail over by Hasbrook. Uh, that will go up on the fifteenth. Um, so I encourage you to go and check out and do a story walk and look for the hidden reindeer, uh, along the trail. Uh, it's a special, there, there's some, yeah, some special discoveries to be had.
Wonderful.
So I wanna thank, uh, Liz Hoggwell, uh, and it's, it's sponsoring that with the C F C.
So, that was, that was a fun, safer book as a kid.
Yeah.
Actually, that is very book. Alright, um, search warrants and miscellaneous advisories?
We have no search warrants. Uh, we did have one public records request that we fielded, uh, that I talked about before. So that's probably the, the closest to that that we've had.
Okay.
Uh, we, we answered and, um, we, we think that's an ongoing conversation right now. It's, it's in the requesters' court, whether that we can do or not.
Okay. Alright, let's move on to staff and trustee remarks. Any remarks? You made enough remarks?
Yeah.
Please, Clayton.
I know that I, in my moral moment, I love to show off our library of things, and I did bring the Christmas cookie kit. So if people are thinking about doing some baking or anything, um, it's got a great, uh, it's got Cookie Craft Christmas, and it's got a whole bunch of cookie cutters inside, just as a reminder. Uh, our induction cooktop actually saw, I almost brought that up 'cause I thought that was pretty neat.
Yeah.
Um, but this seemed a little more seasonal and topical right now. So I encourage people, if you're looking and, and thinking and need some extra supplies before going and spending a bunch of money on a one-time purchase that you're not gonna use for another eleven months, then borrow it and, and share the, share the joy this way.
Very nice. So can I search for things online?
You can, you can go and look in the catalog, look up, you know, uh, you know, Christmas cookies. Uh, you can find our cookbooks, um, or you can also find this, it's, we have a, we have some guides to the, to the things in our library of things. You can also come and, and browse the collection, it's an easy way to go to see what's there. But if you wanna put in a request, then it's easy, you can, you can find them in the catalog.
You have all those cake pans, sure.
We do have lots of cake pans too, that's true.
Yeah.
Those are a great thing, uh, 'cause if you're only gonna make how many themed cakes, all sorts of styles.
Mickey Mouse and?
Yep.
All sorts of styles.
Exactly, exactly.
So, it's a good time of year for baking, I encourage folks to go out and, we're actually doing a, yeah, a, a cookie swap, uh, here on staff later this week.
Nice. Any other remarks, anyone? Alright, then, it's time for a German. Can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? John, in a second? Donna, thank you, all of those in favor of adjourn the meeting?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Very-
See you on the New Year.
See you on the New Year.
That's twenty twenty-four.